Evening, everyone. I have 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. It is April 19th, 2021. Here for the city council meeting for the city of Waverly. The mayor and council have determined that an in-person meeting of the city council is impossible or impractical due to the COVID-19 pandemic. When an in-person meeting is impossible or impractical, Iowa Code Section 21.8 permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. The meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and necessary city staff will be in the council chambers. The seven council members will not be in the chambers but will participate via Zoom conferencing. Comments for items that are on the agenda may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the city council members, or by calling 319-596-0179 during the meeting. The video and audio conference of the meeting will be broadcast on the normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Meeting minutes will still be kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. I'll officially call the meeting to order and ask Carla to kindly conduct the roll call, please.
Ball four.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Kengas.
Present.
Rafi.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Thank you. Also want to welcome back our guest council member, Dr. James Pope. Pleasure to have you back with us this evening.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Item C is the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. All in favor of...
Well, we're missing a couple items here on the agenda. I had asked that we revisit the masks and the return to chambers. We had a second person. I want to know why that's not on the agenda. Did that not get received?
I don't know. Did that get received into... I know that it's slated for the first meeting of the month.
I would... So what is the procedure for an emergency meeting? Because we can't... Unless if we can amend this agenda. And the reason is, here's the reason. It's very simple. There's floods of information coming out on this, on government, from the government. So we need to look at this issue. We need to discuss this issue, and we need to talk about this issue. We can't do that when it's not on the agenda. And we can't wait another month because we are influencing society in a very, very seriously negative way. This can't continue, guys. This is total nonsense. Unless if you... And I've asked for the science now for months from all of you. I haven't seen anything. Not a thing. So please tell me what we're doing here.
We have a procedural answer for that, Mr. Berger, that you're aware of.
I'm not sure what answer you're looking for. It's not on the agenda. I didn't have anything to do with the agenda.
So we have an item that should be on the agenda. That's wonderful.
Was it...
The only email that we had was you requesting it to be on the agenda. There was no second that we have actually confirming that. Who was your second to have it on the agenda?
I actually asked to have, you know, mask and being in chambers on the agenda. Maybe my email was not direct enough.
So that's multiple council people. That kind of concerns me. I don't know what the procedure is from here, but...
It is to have a council member and a second if the mayor decides not to put it on the agenda. And as before, your email did not say you wanted it specifically on. I recall that you were going to email other council members to ask them of this as well. That is not stating that you want it on the agenda on this day. At least, that's my opinion of it. That's the way I look at it. And furthermore, council itself voted majority to have the discussion of the masks on the first of every month. That was done in public, open session. It's been done that way the entire time. In two or more weeks, it'll be on again. So if you'd like it on again, I'd ask you to follow the procedure and be a little more clear than, "I'm thinking about putting it on. I'm going to talk to other council members. I demand it be put on. It needs to be done correctly according to procedure." You've all known what it is. It's been voted on multiple times now. Policy procedures by everyone, seven to zero pass.
James, we had, very simple. We had two people ask for it on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. It used to be on...
You did not have two people ask for it then.
Maybe they'll put it on the agenda. Maybe that's the case. Maybe that's the case, but he didn't. So what is the procedure now to have an emergency meeting? Because I am looking at nonsense of epic proportions going on here. You know, I brought you doctors, thousands of doctors signing, all right, and was told it was a conspiracy theory. Now we have local doctors saying, "Oh, my gosh, this is having negative impacts. So let's please take care of this." If this goes until this summer, I can tell you, I'm looking at some stuff coming down the pike that we do not want to get involved in. I want our city out of this mess.
What do we have on the agenda for next week as far as the study session? What's planned?
I haven't seen the draft agenda yet, Mr. Kengas.
Would it be possible to put a discussion of the masks, potentially get Bremer County Health to participate in the discussion as part of our study session next week?
I would request the same thing.
That would get us, that would get us the information that we need. Matthew, if you've got some documentation that you can share that would go into this for the study session, that would be great.
There's a new study from Stanford that I just placed on my personal page. I'd be glad to email it out.
Yeah, but I would share it with Carla so that it can be on the agenda and put it in the packet. So that we have that. And then we have it on the agenda for next week for a discussion that leads into our first of the month, the following week, to make a decision.
I got another study on the cases, too, by the way. That's going to be real interesting, guys. Explain that one. You better be ready for it.
Okay. So we've got a request for, and this is out of line with the agenda item, but we'll take the request for a study session item. Wouldn't be an action item on our study session, but it would be information dissemination, gathering and dissemination for the first meeting where this is already on the agenda for...
There's no reason we couldn't make it an action item, though.
That would be up to this council to decide if that's, if they wanted to have that be an action item, to be followed by an action item at the very next meeting again. Unless...
And the reason I say this is conditions are changing rapidly, rapidly. And people are getting upset rapidly. So we need to take care of this quickly.
And I think this is the path for addressing any concerns, is to have it on that study session. And between now and Thursday for the deadline for the agenda, need to make that, pardon me, Carla? Are you looking Tuesday?
No, yeah, fine.
Okay. Is having it very clear-cut as to what this agenda item on next week will be? So is it an earlier due date, Carla?
Thursday is fine.
Okay. So definitely have to have this decided by Thursday at the latest if this is an action item or not. Okay? All right, you. However, to approve this evening's agenda, though, all in favor of approving the agenda has moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item D is approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion for the April 5th, 2021.
I will move approval of the minutes as posted.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Glazer. Any council discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item E is a proclamation. Carla, can you mute, by chance? I get some feedback.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did.
That's okay. Good. Is the annual Arbor Day proclamation. Proclamation reads, "Whereas trees are a most valuable resource in Waverly and the state of Iowa, by purifying our air and water, helping to conserve our soil and energy, creating jobs for our people, providing critical wildlife habitat, and yielding bountiful recreation; and whereas disease, insects, and pollutants have damaged and continue to threaten our trees, creating the need for reforestation programs and concerted public action toward ensuring the future of our city's urban forest; and whereas, this year, on the 30th of April, Arbor Day, the people of Waverly pay special attention to the wonderful gift that our trees represent and dedicate themselves to the continued health of our city's urban forest. Now, therefore, I, Adam Hoffman, Waverly Mayor of the City of Waverly, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the day of April 30th to be Arbor Day for 2021. Further, I urge citizens of Waverly to become aware of the importance of trees in our community's well-being and to participate in tree planting programs which will ensure a green Waverly in the decades to come." Entertain a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
I'll move to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Rafi. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item F is the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is set the public hearing date.
Sir, I would like to see if we could get somebody to motion to remove item number six, as the application is not ready for council just yet.
I will go ahead and pull that myself, pending technicalities of it not being prepared. So I'll just refrain from that one unless there's an objection by the council, which I would presume there shouldn't be. Hearing no objections, we'll move forward with that, Carla. Thank you.
One question. Can we move on item seven before item six? Is item seven, which is the state revolving fund?
They're unrelated.
They're unrelated? Okay.
I'm talking about on the consent agenda, Brian.
On the consent calendar.
Oh, I thought I was looking on the consent calendar. I'm sorry. Oh, thank you.
All right. So again, item one, set the public hearing date for consideration and approval of the request for proposal, RFP, for development process for disposition of the former Washington Irving Elementary School site for May 3rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Item two is set the public hearing date to review and approve the updated zoning map for May 3rd, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Item three is pay request from Cresco Building Service Incorporated for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 project for the amount of $21,538.40. Item four is a pay request from Cardinal Construction for the Cedar River Park Phase Two project for the amount of $12,956.99. Item five is a Class E liquor license for Walmart Supercenter Number 1005. Item six has been pulled. Item seven is a cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permit for Waverly Tobacco and Vape. Item eight is cash disbursements for March of 2021. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move the approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rafi, second by Bergen. Any council discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item G is regular business. Resolution 21-54, resolution approving change order number one to the owner occupied rehabilitation contract for project number four of the Waverly CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution 21-54, approving change order number one to the owner occupied rehabilitation for project number four of the Waverly CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program for an increase of $6,175.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Drinkow. Council discussion, if any. See, Rose Phillips has joined us. If we have any questions with us. Thank you, ma'am, for being on. Hearing no comments. Roll call, Carla.
Ball four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent, Resolution 21-54 is approved. Item two is Resolution 21-55, a resolution approving the payment of TIF hotel motel tax and upper story facade improvements rebates to be paid in this fiscal year 2020-2021. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 21-55, approving the payment of TIF hotel motel tax and upper story facade improvements rebates to be paid in this fiscal year 2020 to 21 for the following. Carmy Flavor and Fragrance Company, $14,693.89. Waverly Hotel Group LLC, HM Tax Hotel Motel Tax, $46,361.33. Waverly Hotel Group LLC, TIF, $93,397.32. Ann's Liquidation Service LLC, $265.14. Ann's Liquidation Service LLC, $1,168.43. Best Ventures LLC, $1,379.40. Daughery Bishoner, $2,387.39. Brian Schneider, $2,882.35.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rafi. Not to nitpick, Mr. Bergen, Waverly Hotel Group Hotel Motel Tax Line is $46,362.33.
Oh, did I miss a number?
Yeah, it's okay.
They all run together.
Just want technicalities to come.
I appreciate the correction.
No problem. Any council discussion here?
Bill, catch me up today on Carmy Flavors. And I think I asked this last year. Were they... I thought they were out of here or something. I guess help me here. I'm wondering why we're paying them this. But maybe I'm missing something.
So they had two. There was two TIF agreements, and one of those was we didn't pay because they didn't meet their criteria for jobs. But this one was based solely on the increase in the taxable valuation. So we'll be paying this. And I don't remember, it's, one more year after this.
Okay. Thank you. That helps me.
Can you refresh my memory on this again, Bill? What building is this? Is this the one on, going south on Fourth Street out of town?
It's out by the, the city's recycling center.
Okay, you're going to have to be a little bit more specific.
The new building that's just to the east of that, of the recycling center.
Oh, by Krieger Auto?
Well, it's not, it's actually right next to it. It's kind of back away from the frontage street, but it's a large building built for industrial use, which really hasn't been used. But they've been paying the taxes, so we're rebating some of the tax.
It's in the old industrial park there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Ball four.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 21-55 is approved. Take just a moment here just to go on the record and state that the television feed is down right now. It is recording. It will be up tomorrow evening. It is broadcasting on YouTube, just for the record that we are aware of that situation at the present time. Moving on to item number three is Resolution 21-56, a resolution awarding the citywide asphalt patching spring 2021 project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 21-56, awarding the citywide asphalt patching spring 2021 project to Heartland Asphalt of Mason City, Iowa, for the bid amount of $18,075.05.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Schneider. Any council discussion?
Can I get Mike Cherry to talk about the bids? It looks like there were two bids. One was fairly close to the engineer's estimate, but one was, but this winning bid was a good 40% below, or I mean significantly low, like 12,000 less than the engineer's estimate. So I'd be curious, do we have complete confidence in this company to have such a low bid? I'd just like a little insight on that.
Yes. Heartland Asphalt is a well-known, very good company. I understand that for many of these contractors, the weather last fall was exceptionally good for construction activity, which allowed a lot of these contractors to complete projects and have no carryover into the spring. So for some construction projects, we are seeing very competitive bids, while on others, not so much. But in this case, I know that the contractor is definitely looking for work, and that resolves in, results in more favorable bid environment for the city.
Thank you.
Hearing no further comments. Roll call, Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Ball four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
On vote of seven to zero, zero absent, Resolution 21-56 is approved. Moving forward to item four, Resolution 21-57, a resolution awarding the crack cleaning and filling project 2021. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approve of Resolution 21-57, awarding the crack cleaning and filling project 2021 to Wolverine Seal Coating of Jackson, Michigan, for the bid amount of $10,659.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Drinkow. Any council discussion?
Well, this was an interesting bid. I like to see that spread. I imagine they're in town for another project or something. Is that why they are really, look really excited to do this?
Yeah, this is one that was a little bit concerning. It's from a company out of Michigan. And, you know, this is not a very large project by any means. And they picked it up through, like a national clearinghouse of projects. And they are passing through Iowa on their way to Kansas to do, like, some state highway work down there. So we did reference checks on them from various public works directors and county engineers. And they came back with favorable comments, and that they come in, they do good work, they'll move quickly. So make sure that you get everything addressed before they leave town was, was the comment. We basically have no, I guess, no justification to reject their bid. So our recommendation is to proceed forward and give them an opportunity.
And I would say traveling like that is crazy, crazy efficient. So that's what's driving the cost down. That is great to hear. There is, our state auditor is doing a project that is kind of, you know, filing all of those good practices of government. I think that's one of them, so.
I would imagine that your comment about making sure they got everything taken care before they leave town is because they're hitting the road. It's kind of like the carnival in a way. They hit the road and you can't play the games anymore once they're out of town.
If we don't like their work, I'll track them down in New Hampton, though. So there's that.
I assume they are fully licensed and bonded. So, I mean, insured and...
Yeah, from our reference checks, they do work all over the country. So as I said, they're headed to Kansas this summer. Kind of, they're going to try to pick up more work in Iowa that fits into their schedule as they head out. They've done work in Maine. So they've kind of been all over the place. And so like I said, we didn't have any unfavorable comments coming back. And, you know, I think we need to give them a shot.
I would agree.
And the other people, asphalt people, these guys specialize in steel coating, so they know cracks.
They probably do. Anyway, moving forward. Entertain a vote, Carla.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rafi. Did I get Rafi?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Schneider.
Yes.
Ball four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 21-57 is approved. Item five is Resolution 21-58, a resolution awarding the City Hall Parking Lot Repair 2021 project to Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 21-58, awarding the City Hall Parking Lot Repair 2021 project to Feldman Concrete of Dyersville, Iowa, for the bid amount of $22,482.50.
Second.
Motion by Rafi, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any. Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Ball four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 21-58 is approved. Item six is Resolution 21-59, a resolution awarding the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 21-59, awarding the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 project to Greidor Construction, hopefully that's close to their pronunciation, Inc. of Buffalo, Minnesota, for the bid amount of $12,818,900.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any. Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Council discussion and staff if necessary.
I'm guessing with just two bidders, this is a fairly specialized group or project?
Yes, sir. I think I'd be correct. Uh, when you look at the scope of it, the size of it, and then the bidding environment, a lot of times two bidders is absolutely acceptable for something like this. Um, and reading the memo from, uh, Kevin Graves, engineer, uh, you kind of see the pricing increases that have jumped. You see the issues they're having. And a lot of the vendors have so much work around them, they're not willing to travel as much. They don't need to. And so all that combined, you know, caused a little bit of an increase beyond what we were thinking. But, but it is a very complex, uh, project. You look at it, I think Mike had a great document of it before where you see what looks like almost a piece of spaghetti bowl. You pull some of it out and you have to put some of it back in. That is not something anybody can just go and do. The intricacy is, is significant. So when you factor that into what this is, the scope of it, it does take a specialized firm to do this. And I think the environment just, uh, eliminated some of the other bids we were hoping to see. But again, two bids is acceptable. Um, other projects they had mentioned have come in much higher than this, fifty percent higher. Uh, it's just a very rapidly increasing environment. And so, uh, with steel prices and everything in, included, I think Kevin did a great job explaining it in his memo. Hopefully you've all had a chance to read it. Um, it just sums up kind of what we're facing and that unfortunately rebidding it will probably not benefit us going forward. And from a timing standpoint, I don't even think we could actually do it and still meet our requirements. So this is unfortunately in hand we've been dealt, but nonetheless, we think we'll be able to go forward without increasing fees any more than what's already been improved. Uh, that is the question that at some point I need to probably officially ask of council if you are willing to apply the majority of the one point four one million we're receiving to this project to make sure that doesn't happen. Maybe we'll have that on for the first meeting you made to get that confirmation. I'll see if I need it earlier. And if I do, we'll have that looked at as part of the next meeting. But for now, that is where we are building in the one point four million or one point three million, um, into this project to prevent any additional fees from being charged above and beyond what council's already approved.
Well, yeah, the, the bids on this are disappointing, but this is a project that you just don't want to put off. Um, if any of you have seen the facility out there, it is in bad shape. And this is the kind of facility that you don't want to just have break, um, because there, there's just, there's nothing you can do if it does. So, uh, yeah, we, uh, unfortunately, you know, we're going to have to move forward with this. Uh, the bids are reasonable or disappointing. So I don't think there's any question that we need to move forward.
Yeah, I would echo Rod's comments. I, I really appreciated the memos from Mike and Kevin. They were very helpful. Um, and I'm glad that we have done preparation, you know, for years in advance to make this happen. And it's nothing too abrupt. And, um, I think it's a good idea to have a discussion about whether we should use that one point four million so that we don't have to raise fees again.
Anything else? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Both four?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent, resolution twenty-one dash fifty-nine is approved. Item seven is resolution twenty-one dash sixty, a resolution approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Rochester, Minnesota for the WPC Facility Improvements twenty twenty project. Entertain a motion here.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash sixty, approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Rochester, Minnesota for construction phase engineering services for the WPC Facility Improvements twenty twenty project for the not to exceed amount of four hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by both of them. Council discussion if any. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Schneider?
Yes.
Both four?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
A vote of seven to zero, zero absent, resolution twenty-one dash sixty is approved. Item number eight is resolution twenty-one dash sixty-one, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Rochester, Minnesota for services associated with the construction of a wetland in Northwest Waverly. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-one dash sixty-one, approving a professional services agreement with WHKS and Company of Rochester, Minnesota for preliminary phase final design and construction phase engineering services associated with construction of a wetland in Northwest Waverly for the not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kangas. Council discussion if any.
Um, so I have one question. It looks like the total estimated cost for this project is a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. With the current, um, estimated cost of the project being twelve point eight million, um, as I understand it, this fund is coming from, um, the state revolving fund, you've got ten percent of the overall project. So it seems like we're leaving another half million dollars of water quality development on the table. Are we going to have the opportunity to, uh, make use of that remaining funds? Is there additional projects in the work to make sure that, uh, we're taking advantage of that higher price tag?
Brian, I wish there was. Uh, we've hunted high and low and, and, um, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we were looking at wetlands on the east side of town and, and, uh, working with Iowa Department of Agriculture and, and land stewardship and, and, uh, you know, swing and a miss, to use, um, baseball metaphor. And, um, we're really struggling to identify, um, a project either within the city limits or, or just outside the city limits. And, uh, um, you, you have to have a viable project and you have to have, um, agreeable landowners in order to make, make these things become a reality. Uh, as it relates to a lot of the public infrastructure, um, communities that do things well from the beginning tend not to be rewarded with projects because, um, you, you've done things correctly to start with. A lot of this, uh, funding is geared towards, uh, fixing problems, existing problems within communities. And, you know, good news, bad news is, um, we really don't have issues to fix within the communities. So, uh, we hunt it high and low, uh, inside and outside the community. And the only project that we've been able to come up with that has been deemed viable and received DNR approval is the one in the northwest part of town. And that one is, uh, constrained by, uh, the area that can be developed into a wetland. Simply saying, well, let's buy twice as much land and double the size doesn't work in that location.
Is this a case of the train has left the station? Or is there still the opportunity for additional projects to come forward? If someone in the community suddenly has a, you know, a brainstorm and knows a way to use their land, is it still something that can be done? Or have we missed all relevant deadlines?
I, I don't know the answer for that. I see Kevin Graves is still, uh, tuning in. Uh, he may be able to address that, that question, uh, immediately. Otherwise I'm going to have to do some research.
Hi, Mike. Uh, yep, Kevin Graves here with WHKS. I think I can answer that. The, um, so a, any projects would need to be identified and approved by the Iowa DNR prior to the, uh, city being considered, uh, ready for their loan for the wastewater treatment facility prod, uh, process. And they, they accept those applications twice a year, um, in March and September. So I, I don't believe there would be an opportunity to add to what we currently have for that seven hundred ten thousand. But, um, you know, before we finalize that, uh, the, the SRF loan for the WPC project, uh, we will go back and ask that question just to find out if there would be a way to potentially add, add to what we currently have, um, within the scope and the parameters, uh, of the application that was previously submitted and see if there's any wiggle room there.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call Carla, please.
Both four?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent, resolution twenty-one dash sixty-one is approved. Thank you, Mr. Graves, for joining us this evening to answer questions. Item number nine is resolution twenty-one dash sixty-two, a resolution approving an agreement with Team Services for Construction Testing and Inspection Services for the Iowa DOT for the First Street Northwest Reconstruction twenty twenty-one project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash sixty-two, approving an agreement with Team Services of Des Moines, Iowa for Construction Testing and Inspection Services for the IDOT for the First Street Northwest Reconstruction twenty twenty-one project for the estimated cost of not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Glazer. Council discussion.
If, if I could interject with a, uh,
Absolutely.
here, it, it's for an estimated cost of ten thousand dollars, not, not to exceed. It's an estimated cost.
Okay, so estimated cost of ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, the resolution should, um, uh, it, a, a, again, our, the agenda memo states estimated cost.
Do, so we need to amend that? Just remove the strike to the not to exceed language, right? I'm hearing this right here. So we move this along?
Yeah, to, to, um, the agreement actually does not have, uh, an estimated cost in there. Uh, I put an estimated cost in there that reflects something similar to the business two eighteen project to, um, uh, help give a sense as to what type of expenditures we may incur on this, this project. But their, their agreement is actually open-ended. And one of the reasons for that is, uh, as I stated in the, um, the agenda memo, it will depend on the number of days the contractor is placing concrete. So th- this is, uh, primarily for doing, uh, concrete plant monitoring. And so it is, it is going to be dependent upon the number of days spent, uh, placing concrete.
So I believe if Ian would amend her motion, uh, to say a cost, uh, an estimated cost of ten thousand dollars and that to amend the resolution to reflect the same, I think that could be taken as one motion.
Okay, so I will amend, uh, the statement of the resolution instead of saying not to exceed ten thousand dollar cost, it's for the estimated cost of ten thousand dollars and change the resolution to match that.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Glazer, you held the second on that. Do you move forward with that?
Yes, I'll second that amended motion.
Thank you, sir. So we have the motion and the second on the amended, uh, resolution, motion and resolution to match. Any further discussion since we have a new motion? Thank you, Mr. Cherry, for pointing that out as well. Hearing no discussion, roll call Carla.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider? Both four?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent, resolution twenty-one dash sixty-two is approved. Item number 10 is resolution twenty-one dash sixty-three, a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with Intercog for grant writing services related to the application for COVID nineteen relief recreational trails program funds for improving bridges on the Waverly Rail Trail section of the Rolling Prairie Trail. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash sixty-three, approving the memorandum of understanding with Intercog for grant writing services related to the application for COVID nineteen relief recreational trails program funds for improving bridges on the Waverly Rail Trail section of the Rolling Prairie Trail in the amount of one and one half percent of the funds awarded, maximum two thousand dollars to be paid by the city from local funds.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Council discussion if any.
I'll just note that, uh, they do not charge us in advance for this service, that we only pay them, um, or they collect that fee if we get some grant money.
That is correct. Pay for performance. Hearing no further comments, roll call Carla.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Both four?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent, resolution twenty-one dash sixty-three is approved. Item number 11 is resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four, approving the Iowa Department of Transportation Airport State Funding Application for the Reconstruct Tea Hangar Taxi Lanes twenty twenty-two project at the Waverly Municipal Airport. Entertain a motion.
I would move to approve resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four, approving the Iowa Department of Transportation I dot Airport State Funding Application for the Reconstruct Tea Hangar Taxi Lanes twenty twenty-two project at the Waverly Municipal Airport.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Drinkow. Council discussion.
Does Joe Biden still want to get rid of airplanes? I hear somebody say that. No. They still talking about that crazy idea. They want to get rid of air travel by twenty-third. Was that in the Green New Deal? And I bring that up because if we spend millions here and we have a political movement that eliminates air travel, that, that'd be kind of silly for us to spend this money.
I spoke with, uh, the, what is his?
You spoke with Joe Biden?
Oh, no, no, no. I was looking for the name. I, I, I spoke with Keith Caspari from the Waterloo Regional Airport, um, on acquaintance, uh, this last Tuesday. And we were just talking about general airport operations and, and growth and that kind of stuff. And I know they're significantly different than us, but we were talking about hangars and the fact that they've got a long waiting list of, uh, people looking for tea hangers the size that we have. And I know that's not this project as far as any expansion of, you know, additional tea hangers. But this project ties into that with having quality, um, taxi lanes and those adjacent facilities, even though they're just flat on the ground. Um, so I said, you know, if we move forward with something like that, we'll take some of those off your hands if they want to relocate. So, um, you know, they've, he had complimented us on our, on our report and likewise I did his. But, um, yeah, this is a, a good investment, I believe.
Well, at this point, as I understand it, we're simply applying for the grant. We, we haven't, there's no guarantee that we'll get the grant and the construction won't happen unless we're actually awarded the grant. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct, and this is our second attempt to request funding for this project.
We have to have a good idea what the project's going to be before we blindly apply for grant funds. That's my, that's my point. So thank you, Mr. Drinkow, for pointing that out, that this is not a commitment at this point. So entertain a vote, Carla.
Glazer. Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero with zero absent, resolution 21-64 is approved. Item 12 is the third and final reading of ordinance 1085, an ordinance vacating and transferring cul-de-sacs by Glass Hill and Pinehurst Point and Centennial Oaks Golf Club addition to the Waverly Municipal Code. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 1085, vacating and transferring cul-de-sacs by Glass Hill and Pinehurst Point in Centennial Oaks Golf Club addition in the Waverly Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, counsel discussion if any on this third and final reading. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
No.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Did I count on those right? We're six and one? Or did I miss one? Six and one with zero absent, the third and final reading of ordinance 1085 is approved. Item 13 is resolution 21-45, approving and accepting a dedication of additional right-of-way adjacent to Eagle Ridge Drive located within Centennial Oaks Golf Club addition to the city of Waverly. Entertain a motion, please.
I will move approval of resolution 21-45, approving and accepting a dedication of additional right-of-way adjacent to Eagle Ridge Drive located within Centennial Oaks Golf Club addition by Echo Development Group LLC to the city of Waverly.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinkow, any counsel discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to need a little bit of an explanation on this. I was trying to find my way through this on the map, and I was having a very difficult time with the scale of this map to figure out just what what exactly we were, we were doing here. So if James or Bill can give me a very short description of what this is.
Yes, I can do that. I shared the map, and I'm going to take my cursor and point to the easement area. You can see that where it's pointing?
Yeah.
That was created like some developments do to to prevent connection to that road from an adjacent property. We would like the opportunity to be able to connect if we need to in the future, and so we're taking away that that little easement that allows them to prevent us from connecting the adjacent property. May not happen, but it was just, it was a good thing to get done in this situation.
Okay.
And Bill, could you explain the sidewalk issue?
Yeah, the sidewalk, that's a fairly long lot. It's probably about 50 or 60 feet long, and it really just goes along the, between the fence line and the and the road right away. What will happen is if, when the owner of that lot that's to the south of that, that this is carved out of, when they develop their property, they'll be required to put sidewalk from the west boundary of their property to the easement, and then the city will add the additional sidewalk in that area. There may be some changes in how that's done depending upon how that intersection is improved in the future. So we didn't want to put that on somebody else. That's an unnecessary burden for the owner of lot 51 because that's a substantial amount of sidewalk that really doesn't front their property. So we felt that was fair for the city to pick that up. That would then connect the trail eventually to the trail across Eighth Street when that intersection is improved.
Hearing no further comments, roll call, Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
No.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
On a vote of six to one with zero absent, resolution 21-45 is approved. Item 14 is resolution 21-50, a resolution approving an irrevocable letter of credit for Echo Development Group LLC as the payment guarantee to the city. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 21-50, approving an irrevocable letter of credit for $301,000 for Echo Development Group LLC as the payment guarantee to the city for the developers' portion of the project.
I'll second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Glazer, counsel discussion.
This was interesting. I guess, are we doing a letter of credit to develop? I, I'm just, I'm explaining.
Yeah, I'd be glad to explain that. Generally speaking, when somebody's doing, has to perform an improvement, we require a bond, a performance bond. In this situation, a bond, though, has to be, if there's any reason that we have to pursue the bond or try to guarantee the payment, it's, it requires legal action. What we're doing instead is, is what is allowed in the code for, in lieu of a performance bond. This would actually allow us to bill the contractor or the developer for their share as it's, as it's, the project is completed. And if they don't pay within 30 days, the bank just pays us. We just get a check from the bank, so we don't have to do any lawsuit against the the performance bond. It's a, it's an easier way of of taking care of these payments. We don't expect there to be a lot of payments made. It should be a 10-week project, and so it won't be a, you know, multiple payments, but it should be a good way of making sure that this, the developer's share gets paid to the city.
Thanks, Bill. I guess I hadn't seen that before, so, but I don't pay that close attention until you're on the count.
Hearing no further comments, roll call, Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh, four.
No.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
On a vote of six to one with zero absent, resolution 21-50 is approved. Item 15 is approval of the mayoral appointments. I'll read these so you don't have to. Approval of the following mayoral appointments. Lee Hendricks is reappointed on the Airport Commission for a term ending May 1 of 2026. Stephanie Garner is reappointed on the Pioneering and Zoning Commission for a term ending May 1, 2026. And Carl Benning is reappointed on the Civil Service Commission for a term ending May 1 of 2027. Entertain a motion to approve those.
Move approval of mayor appointments, says Red.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Bergen, any counsel discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same, oppose the same sign? Motion carries. As we continue to trans, move forward in this year, there are some additional openings. One on, one for sure on Pioneering and Zoning and some others that will be up for consideration. So if you're interested in boards and commissions, always go to the city's website under Boards and Commissions and fill out the online application. Section H, reports from boards and commissions. Item one is Pioneering and Zoning Commission minutes for February 4 of 2020. Item two is Pioneering and Zoning Commission minutes of March 4 of 2021. Item three is Human Equity and Diversity Commission minutes of March 9 of 2021. Item four is the Airport Commission minutes of March 11 of 2021. Item five is the monthly financials of March 2021. Item six is the Civil Service minutes of April 1 of 2021. And item seven is the senior calendar of April 2021, all received into record. Staff updates from Mr. Browner and his staff, please.
I believe Garrett has a few updates tonight, sir.
Yep, thank you. First thing on the list is the Set the Pace Challenge is going on right now. We had our first walk last night. There was about 20 people to join us. It was a very nice evening, so Mayor Hoffman was there along with Dr. Rothie, so thank you for coming out and joining us. We do have two more walks coming up, Wednesday at 5:00 and Thursday at 5:00. I know some of you are planning on being there. It's going to be a little chillier, but we'll do the walk anyway. We're also here in the middle to late April. That contains both Earth Day and Arbor Day. So right now, the Leisure Services Division is asking for the community's help in picking up some trash. We've got a lot of stuff that's blown into fence lines, tree lines, detention areas, places like that, you know, that's still pretty visible right now. So we are asking for some help there. If an individual or group wants to volunteer to do that, they just need to call the Leisure Services Office, get ahold of myself or Jim, and we will either assign them a spot or if they have a spot that they, you know, are near and dear to or something like that, they can choose a spot to do, and we'll take that off the list. We'll give them trash bags and tell them what to do, you know, with the trash bags. Once they're done, then our staff will go and pick all those up. So that's going on here through the end of April. 16th Annual Art Walk coming up Saturday, May 1. That'll be in Coleman Park. I believe there's close to 40 vendors, so we're looking forward to that. It's going to run from 10 o'clock until 4 o'clock, and setup is at 7:00. We do need some volunteers for help with setting up, help throughout the day. You know, if you can come and work for an hour, if you want to stay all day, we'll take whatever we can get. Next on the list, dog obedience classes. We were offering a class for Mondays beginning on May 3. That class filled up so quick that we have opened another session, so we are doing Tuesdays as well. Those are at 6 o'clock. We do still have three spots available there, so be sure to get signed up if, you know, if you want to. Mr. Bergen has signed up, so thank you, Brian. We'll see you there.
Actually, it's my dog got signed up, but.
I think they teach you some stuff in those classes, too. Anyway, the cost for that is $140 per dog, $120 if it's a rescue dog. And those classes are for six weeks. Sorry, I forgot to mention that. Okay, only a couple things left. Sorry, we've got a lot going on. Community Garden Planting Day is coming up. That's going to be on Saturday, May 8, and that's going to run from 9 o'clock until 12 o'clock. That'll be at the Community Gardens in southwest Waverly. Last year, we harvested almost 9,000 pounds of produce, so it was a, an unbelievable amount of food, really. But we are looking for volunteers, especially for planting day, but then throughout the season. Regular volunteer hours are 9 to 11 on Saturday mornings or Tuesday evenings from 6 to 8 throughout the season. And finally, Tree Planting Day. Again, sticking with Arbor Day here, May 12, Leisure Services will be partnering with Waverly Shell Rock Middle Schoolers. We have 115 trees that we will be planting this year. Since the onset of the ash borer, we have taken down about, I don't have an exact number, but it's in the 600s for amount of trees that we have taken down. The original goal, when we started removing ash trees, was to be able to replace about 30% each year. We're actually at about 65% per year. So we've shot right past that, and most of that is because of donations from Tree, Waverly Trees Forever, and then also Trees for Kids Grant that we have gotten the last few years as well. So that's what pays for all the trees, all the water bags, all the mulch. Everything is paid for by those two. So anyway, that planting day is Wednesday, May 12, with about 80 middle schoolers, so we're looking forward to that. That is all I have for you tonight.
With that tree planting with the middle schoolers, are, is Leisure Services looking for people to assist that day outside of the the middle schoolers?
We would take some volunteers if you have some tree planting knowledge. We probably have enough people that will be able to supervise and, you know, take students from place to place, but anyone with some tree planting knowledge, we will definitely take.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, anything else, Mr. Browner?
Actually, Garrett, can you give me an update on the historic sign that's going to be going up on the Four Queens Corner? I don't think it's been placed yet. Do we know when that's going to be installed?
It has not been placed yet. I believe it's ordered. Bill has a little bit more information on that. He's been the one working with that. So if, Bill, if you'd like to answer that one, that would be great.
I was hoping that they would have it within, within a month. We've had it in there and they've got the design, so it's just a matter of them completing the sign, and then they do the installation also.
Thank you. Garrett, do you have any update on when work on the downtown mural is going to resume?
Yep, thank you, Brian. I forgot to mention that one. So I have been in contact with the artist, and we were planning on getting scaffolding over there sometime this week. With how the weather has turned out for the rest of this week, we're going to hold off until at least next week, but it is in the works, and as soon as the weather allows, he'll be back over there to finish that mural up.
Excellent. Anything from any other staff, Mr. Browner?
Sir, I believe it's all we have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Move forward with Section J, City Council comments. Just going to start at the top right, Mr. Drinkow's up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank all of those people who tuned in to the neighborhood Zoom meeting that we had Wednesday night about the, the development proposal for the Irving School property. And I also want to thank all of the people who have contacted me on the last few days after the Wednesday night meeting. I really appreciate your comments. I hope you'll, you'll keep that going on. I just wanted to, to warn them in the area around the, the property that my goal is to go out and talk to as many people as I possibly can before the May 3 public hearing on that. So if you see somebody with their, their council mask knocking on your door, you know, don't be afraid, don't call the, the police, don't try to hand me trick-or-treat candy. I'm just trying to get your opinion of, you know, some, some of your thoughts on the development of that property. So hopefully that will happen before May 3. If I don't get to you by May 3 or you haven't had the opportunity to, to get in contact with me, you know, I'd really encourage you to sign into the May 3 public hearing and make your comments known on May 3. So that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bergen.
I have a question. Do we know, so when is the deadline for individuals who are interested in running for the Ward 2 council seat? When is the deadline for them to turn in their petitions of signatures so that they can be on the ballot?
I'm sorry, Brian, I did not bring that information with me. Yeah, it's-
Yeah, it's early. I, I better not guess.
Okay. Well, I, I suppose, I wanted to encourage anyone who's interested in being, being on that ballot to be aware of that deadline and to make sure that you get your signatures in, in time so that you can be on the ballot. So I think it's very important to have engaged qualified people on city council, and I would encourage anyone who cares about what's going on in this city to get those signatures gathered and get the paperwork turned in.
And I, I do remember that it's, I have to give these minute, the minutes from this meeting to the auditor and, excuse me, from the last meeting now that they're approved, and that will trigger the dates, but the, I have to let her know thirty-two days in advance of the election, and the papers have to be turned in twenty-seven days before the election. So there's about five or six days that they have. I just don't remember those dates.
Well, so, so it sounds like they've got, you know, maybe two weeks to gather those signatures and turn in the paperwork, so.
Roughly, yes.
Yeah. So, so get busy.
I did just receive a, a message from an individual confirming May fifth was the date. So unless you hear otherwise, it's, that's what this person is planning on. So anyway, the sooner the better. You can turn them in tomorrow if you want, honestly. So, all right, with that, Ms. Rothy.
We just got a chat message from Eric from the newspaper. It was May seventh, according to the county.
Well, we'll, we'll just go with this. Let's have Carla verify for us just to make sure that we have every, all of our ducks in a row. I think that's the best way to go. So anything further?
My only other announcement has to do with a fundraiser that's coming up this Saturday for Heritage Days. It's their annual color run that is at nine o'clock this Saturday. They already have about a hundred people registered. I think the weather is supposed to be a little warmer by then, but it starts at nine. You can register on the website. You can also show up and register that morning at eight o'clock. You would go to the Civic Center to do that, and it is thirty dollars to register as the team leader, and then there's a discount for team members. So sign up and do that.
All right. Any council members, team leaders, if anybody can drop in underneath? Not me. I don't, I don't run. All right. Moving forward, Mr. Glazer.
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Bofor?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Speaking of Ward Two, we need somebody to run in that ward who's going to change this road out here because on Saturday, it was a mess. We had a town event, a small thing out there. Not many people, really. I mean, but compared to like a, if we have a rag ride or something, we have to change that to be able to even do those events in the future. But it's, it's really upsetting. It's a Saturday, and customers can't move around. So let's look at this and get this on the agenda very quickly because I'll tell you, the bosses, the residents, are getting increasingly upset at that issue as well. And they're kind of combined. So they're, they're, and I can't, I mean, I don't want to, if, if I go into much detail, I get labeled a conspiracy theorist, so I'm not going to do that right now. But I will say, this has to get resolved soon.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I believe we've got through just about everybody, our guest councilman, Mr. Dr. James Polk.
Thank you for another exciting and entertaining evening. I appreciate the effort that everybody puts into it and how much hard work this is trying to keep up with everything. So thanks for letting me be part of it.
Yes, and we'll see you next week. Mr. Kangas, Mayor Protown.
I am good for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm going to keep it short because most people have covered everything there. The walk last night was very enjoyable. Thank you, Dr. Rothy, for joining us, and those others. Gina joined us, of course Garrett and Paige and a bunch of people. So it was a nice evening for the walk. So I will not be able to make it on Wednesday or Thursday night for those events, and I have other obligations on Saturday, so darn, I don't get to do the color run. So moving forward with item L is executive session. Number one, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price governmental body would receive for that property. Entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll move to enter into exec, executive session.
Second.
Second by Schneider, second by Bofor. Roll call. Carla.
Hey, Schneider.
Here.
Kangas.
Yes.
Both four?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Rothy?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
We will go into executive session. Thank you all for joining us as far as guests go. And I'll just remind council, being in executive session when we're not in the room, it's can be a little awkward and difficult with other people in your home, so be respectful for that. It's your obligation to observe the executive session rules and regulations. All right.
Question.
Yes.
Point order. Do we continue recording during the executive session?
Yes.
The Zoom meeting?
We have to.
Yes, we do, as Bill will be the host, and he'll just make sure that we're the only ones on.